Mary.
Mary. All right, let's, let's call this meeting is order, it's six thirty-one. The intent of the meeting is to conduct a workshop to discuss a zone change in the eastern part of this community that's by, by and large classified as commercial forest land, which limits options for the community going forward. And hence, that started the ball rolling on what might be done in a productive way, since if something gets changed, it, it has a way of getting out of hand if we don't think things through. With that, I'm gonna back off on talking. Lorna, do you wish to speak and introduce Mary?
Hi, Mary, I'm Lorna. I know we've talked on the phone, but we haven't seen each other.
Hey, everybody.
We are looking to get some of your assistance regarding our comp plan, the changes that we would have to make in order to change this commercial forest land to actually be allowed to do some development there and gain some insight from your experience. Give us an idea of the process, some thoughts that you might have on good things and bad things with zone changes and just kind of have a workshop with these lovely people and get a little education going forward so that we can move forward with this landowner's request.
Sure, sounds good. Do you have the, has the landowner requested that it be changed to a particular zone?
He has. No, he just requested that there be a change made so that it would permit solar, which our ordinance doesn't speak a whole lot to solar.
Gotcha.
Open that way. My perspective, and please correct me if I'm misinterpreting this, I, I am currently the assessor for the town of Millinocket, but I have done planning work in, in the past. But my perception was it would be spot zoning because everything around it was not allowing that use and that would be something that we should not do.
So that's, so I'll, I'll talk to you about that.
Okay.
So are you ready for me to just get going or any other comments before, okay, great. So hi, everybody, Mary Costigan with Bernstein Sure. I'm a municipal attorney with the firm and represent numerous municipalities throughout the state. I, I will say from the perspective of whenever I'm asked about changing a zoning amendment, a couple of things come to mind. The first thing that comes to mind is what does your comprehensive plan say? Right? So that is the first place you look. Because any zoning ordinance in the state of Maine has to be consistent with your adopted comprehensive plan. Most comprehensive plans are pretty loose and it's, it's pretty easy to say that something is consistent with your comprehensive plan. But I will say in your case, with the commercial forested districts, your comprehensive plan is very specific that those districts are intended to protect those areas from development. So in order to rezone an area like that, it is arguably inconsistent with your comprehensive plan. That's the place to start. And then the next place I go to is your zoning ordinance. And I pulled it up here. So section, let's see, I have to scroll back up to the beginning. It's page sixteen of my PDF that I have here bookmarked about your amendment procedures. And one of the things that it says, which is interesting to me, so it talks about the procedures for an amendment to your zoning. And then it talks about the criteria, and this is section one twenty-five dash twenty-two paragraph C. So it talks about the criteria to be considered when you're doing an ordinance amendment. And one is, is it consistent with the purposes of this, of the chapter of your zoning ordinance? Is it consistent with your comprehensive plan? Will it satisfy a demonstrated need in the community? And it will not result in an undue adverse impact on existing uses or protected natural resources. So those are the factors that you consider. Well, you'll consider initially in the council ultimately considers when considering a zoning amendment. Then there's this added little paragraph here that says, in addition, when the proposed rezoning is for lands currently classified as commercial forest land to be rezoned for development purposes, the town council shall determine whether such lands are proximate to existing compatibly developed areas. So that leads me to believe that when you created your zoning ordinance, there was some consideration for possibly allowing some reclassification of some of that commercial forest land under limited circumstances. In other words, if it was adjacent to a highly developed area and maybe somebody, and I'm just giving an example, somebody owns a parcel that's in one area and they want to expand into the commercial forest land. Perhaps you would rezone something that's adjacent to a highly developed zone, something like that. I don't know if this is the case in this, it seems like a, there is an exception, but it's very, very narrow here in this paragraph. It's paragraph C two. So those are the places I would look to in considering. So I don't know in terms of where this parcel is, if it's adjacent to anything and what the activity is right next to it, how big of an area this is, you know. Really, the intent of these zones, as, as stated in your own comprehensive plan, is to protect them from development. And so that's really the first place. And then again, the second place is your own zoning ordinance, which does seem to allow for a limited exception to allow some rezoning of those areas.
I think I can answer part of that to you.
Yeah.
Took that area and annexed it. It was very specific that our uses could not be less stringent than theirs regarding that. They wanted it to be protected. Tony showed us a map earlier before you came on. And we had first proposed for an RD zone there with more uses and a highway commercial that would go all the way to the Dolby Flowage. And they disallowed that and would not allow annexation back in the late eighties until we complied. And that's where the commercial forest zone came from. The link with that was properties that were currently enrolled in the tree growth program.
Gotcha. So I, I have, I have your zoning map up on my screen over here. Can you just give me, you know, there's a larger, that it's, it's divided, it looks like it's divided by Central Street. Is that right? There's some, yeah. So where is this specific parcel that's being requested to be rezoned?
So if you work back from Dolby Flowage back towards proper, it is one of those lots that is bisected by the rail line. So the one that says CF of yours is like mine. Those lots right in that area that that goes up through there. It, Tom, is it, it's not the one that's adjacent to the ID, right? The one, the piece down by the road? Yeah, yeah. So there's nothing there next to it. ID doesn't go down to it. It's surrounded by commercial forest.
Okay. Yep. The other thing too is I've, the, the third thing that you typically look at for rezoning, so a comprehensive plan, your zoning ordinance. And then you look in your zoning ordinance to see if contract zoning is allowed. And I don't see, I mean, it's hard. I couldn't do a word search the way your zoning ordinance is up here online, but I was not, I did not see contractor conditional zoning in, in town. Is that correct that you don't allow that?
I don't believe that we do.
Okay. And so what, just for example, if you did allow that, that is what allows so-called spot zoning and no longer become spot zoning because it goes through the analysis of a contract zone. And you go through an analysis of consistency with the comprehensive plan, consistency with existing and permitted uses. And the court has said, if you go through that analysis, it's no longer spot zoning. But if you don't allow for contractor conditional zoning in town, you really have to completely rezone that property as a different zone that's already in town. And if you are just kind of zoning in the middle of a CF, you know, some sort of ID zone or other zone that you think is compatible for solar, it seems pretty inconsistent with your comprehensive plan and also seems a bit like contract zoning when it's really not allowed in, in town. It makes a lot more sense when you're rezoning an area when it's adjacent to another zone, you're sort of expanding the line or you go through a comprehensive plan analysis and you say, you know what? We think as a town, we're going to remove that area over there from commercial forest land and we're gonna do, we're gonna promote XYZ there, you know? And it, it's more of a kind of go back to the basics and go back to your comprehensive plan and revisit that and see what you want to do from there as opposed to, it looks like you've already done your analysis and that area is designated for preservation from development. And in order to change that, you probably go through a lot more steps than just rezoning it.
So I think when the last comprehensive plan was done, and correct me if I'm wrong, planning board, it was an original approach, but I don't think Millinocket really participated to the level to which some communities do. Did you guys participate? Any of the, didn't really participate with it?
The planning board was not involved.
You know, who from the town may have been supplying the information for that plan?
No. No, no, the, the comprehensive plan was just revised or
Yeah, yeah. So I, I think some things got put in there that weren't necessarily what the community was thinking, but lack of participation and the planner just went with what they had. The bigger question that I have with it is it's a regional plan. I don't think the other two approved the plan. So how, how does that work if we need to open that plan up and revisit some of them? How do we handle that?
That's, that's it. Well, I would say if you wanted to, I mean, of course, it's, you know, your comprehensive plan is under your control, right? So if you wanted to kind of divorce yourself from this regional plan, you could do that and do your own plan. And just ask that whoever put this plan together, which looks like the EMDC, that they sort of extract you from that plan so you could go do your own. Unless, I don't know, do you, I mean, did you have some sort of, I imagine this started with some sort of agreement between the three communities?
I'm ignorant of all of this.
What?
I'm ignorant on all of this.
It was just done in 2020.
Yeah. Yeah. But I think unfortunately, there wasn't a lot of participation from the community.
Okay.
Troublesome time for us with the change in leadership and I don't think anybody was paying attention.
Gotcha.
Is it possible to extract our portion of that plan and, and change that and build on it and then resubmit it again for, for consideration? Is that the process?
Yeah, I mean, so you would, do you know what your plan, you, I imagine you had a plan before this?
I had written that plan before.
And it, and it was independent of the regional plan?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I would say you would build on, kind of go back to your original plan and build on that. And just have them extract you from the regional one so you can have your own one. You don't have two inconsistent plans out there.
And how does, I know things have changed. I haven't, I haven't worked on comprehensive planning in quite a while. How does that get submitted now? Where, what?
It's still, it's still the same. There's still a sort of municipal review authority at the state, but now they're, it, you know, there's no state planning office. They're kind of, they're in the conservation office. But I'm sure the, the folks at the, what's the acronym? EMDC can, can help you. And they can also shed some light on how they came up with this, this regional one to begin with.
Approach since none of us know.
Yeah, and I imagine this has been submitted and approved by the state at this point.
I believe it was because I think we voted in our end here, we adopted that. Did we, no, Tony? I, I think, yeah, I think it was adopted when, when one of our prior managers were here.
Seems like it was probably adopted in the middle of the pandemic, which is why nobody can remember.
Could be. That's probably a very good, very good thought.
Yeah.
Can I speak up? Just to make sure people are aware, yourself included there, Mary. The planning board did review chapter fourteen. I think that's still the same number in the document that's adopted by this community. And it was titled future land development or something to that effect. And we met at least a couple of times and formulated our concerns and I sent a letter to Dr. Padilla just indicating what we had for concerns on that one chapter. And I don't believe anything was acted upon by the town on what we raised as concerns. I don't think it has any bearing necessarily on what we're discussing here, but we did have that involvement.
Yeah. So that's a chapter of the comprehensive plan, the future uses. And that, in that chapter, they do talk about the CF land.
I know in that, either in that section or in the plan in general, it was mentioned or raised as a concern how this was all gonna operate since there is no regional government. We have municipalities, we have county, and we have a state. And here we got a document that's covering three communities. And I was just wondering how that was all gonna work or not work.
Well, it's the, it's a document that's now been created. And there's really no need to have any type of governing body over the regional document. It just means that you've, you've adopted it and because of that, all of your zoning ordinance have to be consistent with this plan. And as I said before, many times, it's pretty easy to argue that something is consistent with a comprehensive plan because there are various goals in a plan and, and some of the goals are competing and there aren't that many specific references in the plan. It just so happens that your plan is very specific with reference to the commercial forest land that speaks to the fact that it is intended to protect it from development. And it's just, just so happened that you're, that's a pretty unique situation where there's that much specificity. Yeah, although, I mean, there are some times when a town does, it's the same thing as designating certain areas in your comprehensive plan for growth, certain, designating other areas for, you know, for as rural or farmland or what have you. And so, and then generally your zoning ordinances are then, you know, designed after those larger goals. And then to change it, you have to argue that it's still consistent with the comp plan or else you have to go back to the comp plan and change that first.
So essentially, for us to be discussing this zone, commercial forest land, we have to go back to the newly adopted comprehensive plan and review to see if we will be in compliance with our plan, I guess.
Yeah. So that you would look there and then again, you also look to your zoning ordinance, which provides guidance when you're making amendments and it has to be consistent with those standards there. And also, if specifically with regard to the commercial forest land, it allows the council to make changes if they find that it's adjacent. I'm just trying to find that language again. I lost it. Anyway, it has to be adjacent to sort of more highly developed area.
That the one twenty-five, twenty?
Yes, there it is. Oh, yes. The town council shall determine whether such lands are proximate to existing compatibly developed areas. In other words, if you have a, if you're proposing to rezone a CF lot that's sort of in the middle of other CF land, it probably doesn't comply with your own requirements under your own zoning ordinance. Yep. So that's one twenty-five, twenty-two. See.
But the fact that we have a comprehensive plan that we adopted and other communities have not gives us latitude to do things that would possibly not be easily accomplished.
I think my concern initially was that if we did something that we would knock our neighboring communities out of compliance, I didn't want to be detrimental to them if we changed something. But I don't think that they adopted their plan. I was just concerned of our decisions impacting them in the regional plan. Know if that was a valid concern or not, Mary?
I mean, I would be interested and happy to join you on a call with the, with the planners who were behind this just, you know, just to see the process and how they got to where they are. Again, it's, you know, comprehensive plan is under your control. So if you wanted to extract yourself and create your own new comprehensive plan, certainly it's a process. You're gonna put together comprehensive plan committee and, you know, do the whole thing. It's something you should be able to do. I don't, I can't imagine they could stop you from doing that. But at the same time, the planner would have to work on amending the regional plan to extract you from that and just leave the other two communities unless the other two decide to get out too.
But, but if they didn't adopt it, they're not really in, right? Per se?
That's great. Well, yeah, that's, well, right. It, it means it doesn't currently govern them if they haven't adopted it yet.
Right. Yeah, the words of wisdom that you have for us as we try to move forward.
Um, yeah, I, I, I guess it's just, again, it's all about your comprehensive plan and thinking. And I think once you take a look at that plan and see, I noted there, there were like three major times that the commercial forest land was mentioned and I have, if you want to write it down, I have, I just wrote down, I wrote page seventy-six, page two thirty-nine and page two forty-six were all mentions of that zone and that its purpose was to protect those areas from development. So to have a proposal for development of that, I think it's, it's gonna be a tough sell to say that that's consistent with your comp plan unless it's something that falls under the limited exception in your zoning ordinance because it's proximate to another compatibly developed area.
So just so that I'm clear in my mind, what our path might be. Correct me if I'm wrong. Revisit the comp plan, establish another comp planning committee, review the plan, have the public hearings on the land use, deal with the recommendations and where the town wants to go. And if they want to change that commercial forest, something different that would allow some sort of residential or commercial or some sort of development, go through that process with the public hearings on your comp plan, refile your comp plan with the state, get the objections, answer the objections, get approval from the state, and then the next step would be opening up the land use ordinance, add whatever, if we chose a new designated district with differences in it, to insert that into our existing plan and tweak it where it references the commercial forest if we choose not to have that in the future.
Exactly. Yep.
Anything else that I need to consider?
No, I mean, you'll have to go back to the, you did mention, you know, when you annex that from the state. I don't think I've seen any documents that govern that and whether that's in perpetuity or what type of arrangement you, you have with regard to that, that also should be taken into consideration.
So I looked for those documents because Tony and I had talked about it. And we, we were both here, you know, during that process. I recall the state wanting us not to change it for a period of time. In my mind, it was something like ten years, but there is absolutely nothing in all of those files where we dealt with that annexation, that there's nothing in writing that holds us to any time limit.
Okay.
It's been since eighty-six or eighty-seven. So if there were, I would think that by now that would have been a
Gotcha.
By time.
Yeah. Yeah. So you're right. I mean, it seems, it seems to me from looking at everything and now knowing that the parcel is actually sort of in the middle of the CF and really not something that would fall under your zoning ordinance, that in order to do that, you need to revisit your comp plan from the beginning and see what, as a town, whether you want to do something different with that land or part of it or some, you know, or all of it or what you, what you want to do.
I know when we were discussing possibilities with that area of the community and having options to allow some sort of development, which commercial forest land essentially does not. We didn't want to set something up that was gonna cause a problem for the community in years to come by having a strip mall arrangement from Dolby Flowage going all the way back to the community. There are towns in this state that have development of that type and it isn't the most beneficial for the community.
Yeah.
So we'll leave it at that. But the, the option to do something is really what's motivating this.
Yep.
And let, let me ask one thing. On the discussion that has taken place this evening, once we changed the, assuming we, we do get this comprehensive plan revised, the entire eastern part of this community that is designated as commercial forest land, except for an industrial part that was sectioned out some years ago when the Great Northern existed and the, the mill was operating in a productive manner, which is all gone by the wayside. We can expand, if you want to call it that, a, a zone that would allow the development, but we don't necessarily have to take all commercial forest land. And would that new zone have to be attached to more develop oriented zone toward the west that essentially is the established community today as far as development? We, we can actually do something piecemeal that's, that's productive.
I mean, it really depends. Yes. I mean, you can do, you essentially can do, when you go back to the comprehensive plan level, you are, you are talking loftier goals, broader discussions about what you want to see happen in certain areas of town generally. You know, we think we should, if we're going, you know, you can have a conversation that says, you know, if we are going to take some land out of commercial forest land, where do we want to do that? Does it make sense to do it on the eastern edge, on the western edge, in the middle? And you have that conversation at the comprehensive plan level. And then that discussion gets incorporated into the comprehensive plan. And then your zoning ordinances would be in accordance with that plan. So let's say the comprehensive plan committee suggests and the council adopts a plan that says, we think, you know, there's a, there's development pressure in town and it's time to take some land out of conservation. We should, we still want to keep a lot of it in commercial forest land, but we think we can give up a certain area adjacent to the development on the western edge of the, of the land. And if it says that in the comprehensive plan, then your zoning ordinance could be amended accordingly.
All right, it seems like to start the ball rolling, we have to go back to the comprehensive plan. This community needs to revisit that document and make some decisions on revising that. And then getting to this zoning ordinance would be after that fact is, is addressed.
Correct.
All right. Essentially, we got a marching ordinance. I know that we've had two, I could be mistaken after so many years on this board. We, we've had two comprehensive plans that were developed by the planning board and that were more, I wouldn't say neutral, but were not maybe so focused on conservation of areas, not to belittle that aspect. We, we've got commercial forest land all around us, outside of this community. But within the community, this designation limits the town's options. And that's really what's motivating this discussion. And now we indicate, it's indicated, we've got to visit the comprehensive plan and make some sort of recommendations, which is going to be a, I wouldn't say protracted, but it's going to be involved. The comprehensive plan didn't just materialize out of thin air. We're going to have to get people involved and discuss things to see which way we want to go with the community. And then put before the town to make decisions on, yes, that looks good or no, that doesn't look good. All right, I've said.
Sounds good.
Say that again, Mary, I'm sorry.
So you got it. That sounds like the right plan.
All right. As we go forward with this, the original, I say original, a comprehensive zoning map that we, I have in my possession that dates back prior to annexation, showed all the commercial forest land that's now indicated in the, in the zoning map as RD, rural development. And that's a, that's a, a zone that we still have in this community. But when you read the text of that zone, it was more oriented towards residential settings. And I wouldn't say it precluded other types of development, but that wasn't the, the focus when that RD zone was being written up in the eighties. But things have changed. But in the eighties, having places to live was a concern in this community since there were limited options for development of residential areas. But obviously, now we're looking at something in a more broad sense, residential being one of it. But other options on some sort of commercial use or some of the use of that other than commercial forest land is probably in our best interest.
You got a hand raised behind you.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle. Your light isn't.
It's for Tony. Am I mistaken? Didn't we do one of these about 23, 24 years ago?
Uh, there's two comprehensive plans that I'm aware of, and we did both of them.
It was, it was about 20 some years ago, right?
It was a while ago.
I was at that. That was gruesome. That was absolutely gruesome.
Oh, really?
Oh, my God.
I guess I don't remember being there.
Disclaimer, I was the planner, so. Disclaimer. Somewhere between 2000 and 2005 because that's when I worked for Eastern Main Development Corporation.
Well, Alice Maragas sat next to me for the whole thing, which was part of the gruesomeness, I think.
Okay.
But, I mean, she's one of my best friends, but she was detailed. And I don't know if they're always like that. It's the first and last one I've ever been to. I don't know if it's always that protracted.
Um, there, people have their views and obviously.
Alice had her view.
Yeah, and some individuals in the community really don't express their points of view. Alice did.
Yes, sir.
And to the extent that something might have been said and it wasn't maybe gonna help, that's going back a lot of years.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that that was a comprehensive.
That was a comprehensive plan and there was one.
And we took a lot of that from some other comprehensive plan. Is that right?
We had a previous one in the nineties.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, right.
I just wanted to try to orient myself.
And the, the thing is, Jim Haskell was an individual that was helping the community. In fact, the zoning ordinance essentially came from his organization, Haskell Associates. Because when we were developing the zoning ordinance, we ran into problems with, we knew what the issue was, but we didn't know how to address it. And and that's where Jim came in and helped out a lot. And he was involved, at least in a, in a, I wouldn't say passive way, but he, he had an influence on how things were viewed and considered. And the annexation originated with him.
Okay.
Thank you. From a planner perspective, your community wasn't any worse than some of the other ones. I don't have any recollection of pain working with you, so I think it was probably okay.
Thank you.
Mary, I have another question that comes to me. In the review process, when there's a conversion of something that's been conservation and is going into development, I know the state planning office in the early 2000s was quite a stickler and Beth Ella Valley was there. Is that still the viewpoint? I mean, do they take a stance on a community's wishes against the community regarding conservation? Or do they find if you've done a thoughtful review that they're respectful of the community's wishes?
Yeah, I think they would be respectful of the wishes if you did, if you were thorough and, and clear about where and why. And yeah, Beth was, talk about stickler for detail.
They were horrible. It was, it was, it was a difficult review process at that time.
Yeah, yeah, that.
Let me ask, is there anyone on the board or Peter, Lorna, that wish to express points of view, something that might not have been discussed thus far, but points of view? Because I'm, I'm thinking we've reached an end point and maybe we haven't, but that's the way I'm viewing it.
I know that you will be there, Mary, for us as we move forward and have
Yeah, absolutely.
reserve the right to reach back out to you and extract some of your wisdom when we hit a wall and have struggles.
Of course.
Uh, well, getting into that comprehensive plan, the new one, the one that's now in effect, I, I read it, maybe not word for word, but I read it and I know I had my concerns about things, but the planning board was not involved in that document. And when we get into it now as a community, and I'm sure the planning board will be somehow involved, it'll be a revelation as we find out things that are in that document that might not really be aware of.
I think it was heavily focused on recreation. And we have some other facets going for our city right now with redevelopment. So I think maybe things have changed that want to address and discuss and that's the direction.
Yeah, okay. I don't want to get in particular, particulars, but I know when I addressed that comprehensive plan, there was a term used called growth areas. And I commented that I could not find that term defined in the new comprehensive plan. And it didn't come to light, if you will, until a, a bill that was recently passed by the legislature, LD 2003, and it indicated the term growth areas in that legislation. And it's far reaching for what we have in that comprehensive plan and how that term is used in that newly enacted law, 2003. All right, I'll get off my Benoit.
I will add one other thing to the, to the extent you're interested. And I don't know how you, the council wants to go about creating a comprehensive plan committee, but the planning board can serve as the comprehensive plan committee if the town so desires.
And Mary, that, that isn't the code. There's a chapter 23 in the code book and it does make mention about the planning board being involved. We weren't involved and it's not as if we had a plate that was empty. We had a full plate and I just let sleeping dogs lie rather than getting involved. But obviously, it might have been beneficial if we were somewhat involved. All right. Are we done as far as?
Same.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, Mary Cossigan, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Time and expertise, yes, very much so. I do appreciate you being involved here and giving us some insight as we start another facet of that comprehensive plan and a change to the zoning ordinance and what might be possible.
All right. Well, my pleasure. It's good talking to you.
All right. Thank you much.
They don't, well, it can, put it as a tactic. You can tie your, your areas, your conservation areas to property, the tree growth program. There have been communities that have done that, created a zone based on anything involving tree growth program. So that is a possibility. But then you also run the problem of if the tree growth law changes somehow, then that may impact your home. So that may not be the best way. It just depends on what you want to achieve.
And as far as thinking outside of the community, when other lands were viewed, like for seasonal lot development, so forth, the landowner financially suffers those consequences. You want to take that area out of tree growth?
You pay the penalties.
You pay the penalties. And essentially, that's not something that comes before the planning board, per se. All right.
So I don't know if I missed something in the mail. Was this, I have no idea what this meeting was about until I walked in. Is, are we all like that? We just knew that?
Uh, well, I tried to, I, I wasn't trying to be.
It's not a, an accusation.
I'm sorry? Uh, well, we can discuss, I don't know that.
That's my only question, I swear.
Well, we, I, I did send out an agenda and I did have correspondence with the planning board members. And I believe Sean was involved. I think Peter was involved in a sense of being made aware of things. But essentially, it was indicated that there was discussion about a possible rezoning an area. And it started with an individual, an organization that was looking at a farm, a solar farm. But then it turned out to be broader than that. It grew and it was not specific to that property as much as it was specific to the commercial forest zone in the eastern part of this community.
Okay. If you want to adjourn the meeting, I just want to talk to you afterwards to see what I got to know.
You know, I guess my whole wish, we have not had formally a progress.
No.
And then we have to change it back?
Lots of growing, early on that.
And let me chime in. I think that could be done without tying it to the comprehensive plan. We're not going to make a change as much as we're discussing possibilities. And if the community is interested in taking some of that, maybe all of that commercial forest land out of that designation and putting in it to something that would allow more possibilities going forward other than growing trees, I think we can discuss that now in the community. It's just a matter of, once we get to the point of having to change things, we're going to have to go to that comprehensive plan and address that since that's the underpinning of what is gonna allow us to do things. Uh, well, that's what happened with this effort when it first, I was first made aware of it is that a landowner, tell me if I'm wrong, Lorna, a landowner indicated they were looking at a possibility of a solar farm on, on property in the east part of the community.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, from, from the, enter, end of town, going east towards East Millaraca to the Dobie Flowage. Yeah. And that started the ball rolling. But then it got to be a larger, not issue as much as a broader consideration. Because we do have a lot of commercial forest land in the east part of the community. And if you look at the matrix in the zoning ordinance, you're, you, we are not at liberty to do anything with that unless we do change things.
So you're suggesting, Tony, that we have community meetings and see what direction people want to go and be prior to making up our own minds, right?
Uh, well, making up our minds prior to setting something in motion just to see if, if the community thinks that that's something that we should be doing as a community, not the planning board, but as a community. We're not changing anything. We're just talking about, do we want to even think about doing something?
And that's where I'm coming from. Does the community want to lose the green space coming into town? That, that's what my hope is. You know, we've, we've always wanted to keep that look when you came into the Hollywood area. Does the town want to lose that? Do we want to end up like a lot of these other places where?
You got the strip mall that all looks the same.
But is there a way to handle that with setbacks? You can have the best of both worlds if, if that's the direction you want. You make a setback from the road with a vegetative buffer that consists of whatever you decide, whatever is decided by the community, back so far so that what you see is trees, you don't see whatever is behind. Back so far so that what you see is trees, you don't see whatever is behind the trees. So there are ways with setbacks and those kinds of things to development and still keep a rural feel to it. If that's the direction we want to go in.
We haven't heard any of the other land wanting to do anything else.
But the, the one that we talked to was very upset that they bought this land and they can't do it, whether they didn't.
It didn't know.
Well, they didn't just buy that land.
And it wasn't tree growth and they removed it from tree growth program, but that was their issue.
Who is the, can I ask who the landowner is?
Emily Lee.
I asked, how limiting is the commercial forest? Definition of all.
No development, basically.
If, if you look at the matrix in the, in the back of the zoning ordinance, right down the line, it's all in.
Like, I've never read it.
And a dinner.
There'll, there'll be flowage. Yeah, there's a, yeah.
I'm following Central Street.
I mean, the, the distance?
Oh, are you asking?
Within, within town limit.
And I'd say along Central Street is about three miles.
I understand you are misunderstanding. Bill track is.
On, on, on the north end.
Oh, okay. They want to renew the mail.
So, Michelle, this is where you hear it here.
Okay, okay.
Yes. I, I think if anything materializes, not if, this community would be ill-advised, I would say, to open up the entire area that's now commercial forest land. Because if we, the community gets site plan review applications to do something and we think, wow, that, that's going to be not the most desirable because of the proximity of where it might be located and its attachment to part of the community that's already, you know, in some sort of other use.
The converse of that is if we get a development that we want to go there, you're going to be eighteen months opening up a comp plan, doing a comp plan and changing the land use.
Yeah.
So it's a balancing act. The other thing to consider is that you don't have, you can create a new zone. Don't have to use one of the existing zones that you already have. So you could create a new zone with limited uses. You could make it residential. You could make it commercial. You could make it larger lot sizes, bigger setbacks. I mean, it could do whatever is palatable to the.
I think that's framed in the right context. It should be palatable. Something that the community is going to look back on in years forward and say, that was a good move.
Hope so. Hope if we make a move, it's a good move.
Yeah. I'm sorry?
Yeah.
As far as ending this, the, the recording has stopped, Peter. Oh, okay. Well, that, a- as far as, I don't want to end things. Yeah. Oh. Yes. Let me ask this. If we've discussed things to the extent that we wish to, you know, I would just say, get our points of view expressed. Have we? If we have?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. A motion by Tom, a second by Avron. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those who oppose the motion. I guess we're adjourned. Thank you very much. I've got seven twenty-nine.